Well, good morning and welcome to the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee. Well, good morning and welcome to the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee. I just acknowledge the fact that we have present, I believe, everyone who is a member of the committee, I just acknowledge the fact that we have present, I believe, everyone who is a member of the committee, as well, although we do have a leave of absence from the mayor and in her place, as well, although we do have a leave of absence from the mayor and in her place, Acting Mayor, councillor Johnic, who I will now ask to give us an acknowledgement of country. Acting Mayor, councillor Johnic, who I will now ask to give us an acknowledgement of country.
Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the lands and waters we share. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the lands and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people.
Thank you. Are there any declarations of interest in matters on the agenda this morning? Thank you. Are there any declarations of interest in matters on the agenda this morning? If there are no declarations, we'll move to item or business outstanding. If there are no declarations, we'll move to item or business outstanding. Item one, which is capital investment in provisional projects procedure, it was on the table, I believe. Item one, which is capital investment in provisional projects procedure, it was on the table, I believe. Do we need to lift it from the table this morning? We do. So that requires a motion, does it not? Do we need to lift it from the table this morning? We do. So that requires a motion, does it not? Okay, I'd like to move that we lift that item from the table for discussion, seconded by Acting Mayor Johnic. Okay, I'd like to move that we lift that item from the table for discussion, seconded by Acting Mayor Johnic. Is there any questions in relation to that motion? If not, I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Is there any questions in relation to that motion? If not, I'll put the motion, all those in favour. That's carried unanimous. We'll now raise the matter for questions. Is there any questions of the item itself? That's carried unanimous. We'll now raise the matter for questions. Is there any questions of the item itself? Yes, councillor Tully. Yes, councillor Tully?
Yeah, thank you. I've just got a couple of questions. In the draft procedure, Yeah, thank you. I've just got a couple of questions. In the draft procedure, it talks about on a number of occasions relevant elected representatives. it talks about on a number of occasions relevant elected representatives. Is that intended to mean the relevant divisional representatives? Is that intended to mean the relevant divisional representatives?
Whereabouts on the procedure? And you're looking at the final one, are you? Whereabouts on the procedure? And you're looking at the final one, are you?
I assume so, on page two or six, under step 1.0, under step 2.0, on page 17, that's just the page 19. I assume so, on page two or six, under step 1.0, under step 2.0, on page 17, that's just the page 19. Yeah, it just bobs up right through. I'm just wanting to clarify what the, how that's interpreted, intended. Yeah, it just bobs up right through. I'm just wanting to clarify what the, how that's interpreted, intended.
I'll pass to the general manager. Thank you, Ms Mackenzie. I'll pass to the general manager. Thank you, Ms Mackenzie.
Thank you, Chair. Councillors, there was, in the original version that came to council, that was the case. Thank you, Chair. Councillors, there was, in the original version that came to council, that was the case. However, there is an uploaded version after some workshops with councillors that's in the portal However, there is an uploaded version after some workshops with councillors that's in the portal and was sent to you via email, and it actually talks about all elected representatives instead of relevant. and was sent to you via email, and it actually talks about all elected representatives instead of relevant.
Sorry, of all? Sorry, of all?
It talks to all. It talks to all.
Oh, okay. Well, I thought I had the latest. I've got a copy dated the 16th of September. Oh, okay. Well, I thought I had the latest. I've got a copy dated the 16th of September.
I believe there was circulated to all councillors about a week ago, the final. Is that correct, Ms Mackenzie? I believe there was circulated to all councillors about a week ago, the final. Is that correct, Ms Mackenzie?
Yeah, the final. Yeah, the final.
Okay. So if there's a nomination, it goes to all councillors? Okay. Okay. So if there's a nomination, it goes to all councillors? Okay. I can't see that. Yeah. Are there any other changes in that document, in what's been advised? I just can't see that. Yeah. Are there any other changes in that document, in what's been advised?
That was the change that was requested and we've made it to all councillors throughout the process. That was the change that was requested and we've made it to all councillors throughout the process. And then we talked to the online version of the document and the dashboard. And then we talked to the online version of the document and the dashboard. We've changed in the document to refer to that as well. We've changed in the document to refer to that as well.
Yeah, I understand. But besides that, is that the only one change? Yeah, I understand. But besides that, is that the only one change?
That's the change, yes, good. That's the change, yes, good.
Sorry, sorry, through the chairs. There was a track change version, I guess, that highlights all the changes. Have councillors got that? Sorry, sorry, through the chairs. There was a track change version, I guess, that highlights all the changes. Have councillors got that?
I have, yeah. I believe it was sent out to everyone. I have, yeah. I believe it was sent out to everyone.
Yeah. Yeah.
So. So.
Yeah, but it's not in what I picked up yesterday. Yeah, but it's not in what I picked up yesterday. The document I've got is, anyway. The document I've got is, anyway.
I can give you a copy. I've actually got it separated here if you want. I can give you a copy. I've actually got it separated here if you want.
But no, I accept that what says that there's only that one change, yeah, on multiple. But no, I accept that what says that there's only that one change, yeah, on multiple.
Sorry, no, there are more changes. That's why the track change version has all the changes highlighted, so. Sorry, no, there are more changes. That's why the track change version has all the changes highlighted, so.
It's in the LG hub. Have you got your computer? It's in the LG hub. Have you got your computer?
No, I haven't got it here today. Could I ask that this be deferred to later on, if I could get a printed copy of that, please? No, I haven't got it here today. Could I ask that this be deferred to later on, if I could get a printed copy of that, please?
Yeah. Yeah.
The other question I'd raise in that context, so they've got the opportunity of looking at other changes. The other question I'd raise in that context, so they've got the opportunity of looking at other changes. The, if everyone's advised of that, all councillors are advised early in the piece, that is when nomination is made, is that correct? The, if everyone's advised of that, all councillors are advised early in the piece, that is when nomination is made, is that correct? Yeah. Does that then need that later provisions about consultation? Yeah. Does that then need that later provisions about consultation? Or is that, is that sort of? Or is that, is that sort of?
I believe it does. I believe it does. That pretty much satisfies. I believe it does. I believe it does. That pretty much satisfies. And it provides an opportunity for any councillor and the mayor to make inquiries as to the merits of that proposal. And it provides an opportunity for any councillor and the mayor to make inquiries as to the merits of that proposal.
Yeah, but everyone's aware of it from day one, under the changes. Yeah, but everyone's aware of it from day one, under the changes.
Correct. Correct.
So why are we duplicating the process? So why are we duplicating the process?
Councillor Tully, you do need to read the track changes because the consultation session has been effectively changed considerably, to your point. Councillor Tully, you do need to read the track changes because the consultation session has been effectively changed considerably, to your point.
Okay. All right. Well, can I move that this be deferred until the end of the meeting, please? Okay. All right. Well, can I move that this be deferred until the end of the meeting, please? Well, I'm not going to be on the. Well, I'm not going to be on the. Could I just make a suggestion in that vein, so that where there are changes like that and councillors getting the printed agenda, Could I just make a suggestion in that vein, so that where there are changes like that and councillors getting the printed agenda, that you have any particularly significant changes to a report that they have provided or added to the printed agenda, please? that you have any particularly significant changes to a report that they have provided or added to the printed agenda, please?
Through the chairs, certainly. Through the chairs, certainly.
Any questions regarding the motion that has been moved? There being no questions, put the matter to the vote, all those in favour. Any questions regarding the motion that has been moved? There being no questions, put the matter to the vote, all those in favour. That's agreed unanimous. That will be deferred to the end of the meeting. That's agreed unanimous. That will be deferred to the end of the meeting. We now move to item two, which is just confirmation minutes of the previous meeting. We now move to item two, which is just confirmation minutes of the previous meeting. Is there any corrections, addendums or otherwise that need to be made, modifications that need to be made to those minutes? Is there any corrections, addendums or otherwise that need to be made, modifications that need to be made to those minutes? If not, I will move those, yes, moved by councillor Madden, seconded by councillor Martin. If not, I will move those, yes, moved by councillor Madden, seconded by councillor Martin. Any questions in relation to the minutes? There being none, put the matter to the vote, all those in favour. Any questions in relation to the minutes? There being none, put the matter to the vote, all those in favour. That is carried unanimous. Item three, which is provisional project approval. That is carried unanimous. Item three, which is provisional project approval. I believe it relates to two projects, one in Division Three and one in Division Four. Is there any questions of the officers? I believe it relates to two projects, one in Division Three and one in Division Four. Is there any questions of the officers? If there are no questions, I will move the recommendations, that being one for Division Three, If there are no questions, I will move the recommendations, that being one for Division Three, a project for Division Three, disability access improvements, a pathway to Bill Patterson Oval at Limestone Park a project for Division Three, disability access improvements, a pathway to Bill Patterson Oval at Limestone Park and a project for Division Four, installation of a speed awareness sign along Lobst Street Churchill. and a project for Division Four, installation of a speed awareness sign along Lobst Street Churchill. That is seconded by councillor Doyle. Any discussion? That is seconded by councillor Doyle. Any discussion? There being no discussion, put the matter to the vote, all those in favour. That's carried unanimous. There being no discussion, put the matter to the vote, all those in favour. That's carried unanimous. We now move to item five, sorry, item four, correction. We now move to item five, sorry, item four, correction. Personal tribute in council's open space road network. Are there any questions of the officers in relation to this matter? Personal tribute in council's open space road network. Are there any questions of the officers in relation to this matter? Must admit the sensitivity of this matter, and I was approached by a couple of councillors earlier about the prospect of asking some questions, Must admit the sensitivity of this matter, and I was approached by a couple of councillors earlier about the prospect of asking some questions, but was, owing to the sensitivity of it, wondered whether or not there was any provisions under the Act to close the meeting. but was, owing to the sensitivity of it, wondered whether or not there was any provisions under the Act to close the meeting. I'm just looking. I'm just looking. Is there any, were there any questions that anyone wanted to raise regarding the matter? Is there any, were there any questions that anyone wanted to raise regarding the matter?
Just to do with the wording of the recommendations, item recommendation C, I think it should go a bit broader than that. Just to do with the wording of the recommendations, item recommendation C, I think it should go a bit broader than that. I think it's not just that the applicant shouldn't just be advised of the outcome. I think it's not just that the applicant shouldn't just be advised of the outcome. I think the applicant needs to be advised of the policy requirements, a bit more just explained why, you know, why it did not come. I think the applicant needs to be advised of the policy requirements, a bit more just explained why, you know, why it did not come. You don't need to say why it was not approved. You can say why it did not meet the policy requirements, you know, just a bit of sensitivity. You don't need to say why it was not approved. You can say why it did not meet the policy requirements, you know, just a bit of sensitivity. That way councillors can be assured that when the applicant is informed of this, they're informed why. That way councillors can be assured that when the applicant is informed of this, they're informed why. So I'd just be seeking at the appropriate time to amend item C. So I'd just be seeking at the appropriate time to amend item C.
Yes, I just, with respect, I've just had a look through the ability to close the meeting for some of those questions Yes, I just, with respect, I've just had a look through the ability to close the meeting for some of those questions and we'd probably be stretching it if we tried to do it under subsection F of section 254J. and we'd probably be stretching it if we tried to do it under subsection F of section 254J.
Through the chair, that's the one I would have suggested. Through the chair, that's the one I would have suggested.
That's the one you would have suggested? That's the one you would have suggested?
If that was your wish, isn't it? If that was your wish, isn't it?
I'm just, I'm just wondering whether it's probably best to discuss this matter in a workshop or something, or thoughts? I'm just, I'm just wondering whether it's probably best to discuss this matter in a workshop or something, or thoughts?
Could I suggest that if we can close it, it's a sensitive issue and if we can legally close it under that provision, I'd support that. Could I suggest that if we can close it, it's a sensitive issue and if we can legally close it under that provision, I'd support that.
Okay, well, I will move that the meeting be closed in accordance with section 254J, Okay, well, I will move that the meeting be closed in accordance with section 254J, subsection three, subsection F, small f, for the purposes of further discussion. subsection three, subsection F, small f, for the purposes of further discussion. Do I have a second? A seconded by councillor Martin? Thank you. Any discussion regarding that? Do I have a second? A seconded by councillor Martin? Thank you. Any discussion regarding that? If there's no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote, all those in favour. It's carried unanimous. Meeting's now closed for the purpose of. If there's no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote, all those in favour. It's carried unanimous. Meeting's now closed for the purpose of.
The door is now open. Okay, we've returned to open session. Apologise for the delay. Quite a bit of discussion, not specifically about the application but the process. The, we have a series of changes which we would like to move with respect to the recommendations of the report. Do I have a mover for the recommendations as, or the amended recommendations as per the screen at the moment?
Yeah.
Moved by councillor Doyle, seconded by...
You, you.
I'll happily second that. Is there any discussion in relation to those recommendations, that amended recommendation? Which is now taken, which is now taken as the... Yeah, it's taken as the full recommendation. Sorry, my apologies. Yeah, any discussion? No discussion? Put the matter to the vote, all those in favour. Against, that's carried, thank you. We now move to item five. An asset infrastructure services department capital delivery report. Are there any questions of the officers before I pass to Ms Mackenzie as to whether there's some highlights in relation to the report she wishes to speak to? No? Anything you'd like to speak to Ms Mackenzie?
Thank you Chair. This is the July capital report, so it is early in the year. However, we are slightly ahead. We had scheduled an expense of two point, oh, we're ahead by 2.57 million for July. We had a spend of 5.35 million and that was largely attributed to some tractors and mowers coming in that were expected in June, however, arrived in July. And good progress on the Perga School Road bridge replacement as well as the Champions Way drainage improvement project.
Very good. Any further questions? The motion is a receive and note. I'll move the motion a second please. Seconded the acting mayor. Any discussion? There being no discussion.
Just one of the highlights...
Sorry, yes, acting mayor.
A small project in there in relation to the peace poll in Rebel Domain that councillor, councillor Tully and I will be unveiling with the help of the Rotary on Saturday in time for the, the annual international day of peace.
Oh, it's not peace between the two of you, it's actually for international day of peace, very good.
There's peace in between us. Always, thank you.
All good. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion, put the recommendation to the vote. All those in favour. Against, that's carried unanimous. Now, we have a changeover of general managers. So, item six. Which is quite a simple delegation report. Is there any questions of the officer while Mr Davy is sitting up? If there's no questions, it is a receive and note. I'll move the motion seconded by councillor Madden. Any discussion? There being no discussion, put the matter to the vote. All those in favour? That's passed unanimously. Now to item seven. Another report that comes up each round in relation to planning environment court status. Is there any questions in relation to this report noting that it is a court related matter? We may need to close unless the question is quite benign.
I have a question, I just, it's a question of, I don't think it requires us to go into closed session. The question I was going to ask is just the status of the P and E matter involving the matter on Warwick Road near the United Fuels Service Station. Understood that was being challenged by another local business.
That would be the second item on the list. Yeah, so it's still in what's called preliminary steps, which is essentially defining the course of the appeal and exchanging materials. So, it's not, yeah, it's still going about its way, but nothing substantial. It will be reviewed on the 20th of October and that review, there might be further directions provided, including a course towards the end. But at this point in the year with appeals, unless they're, they're getting close to substantial completion, they're probably not going to get a hearing before the end of the year. There's a chance that if they get in the path of a consent order or some other resolution that could occur, but yeah.
Thanks, thanks Jean. Thank you, just noting that, oh sorry, I'll wait for discussion. Is there any further questions of the officers? No? Again, receive a note. I'll move that the report be received and noted. Seconded please. Councillor Doyle, thank you. Discussion? Yeah, I'll just highlight the fact that again, we maintain the status quo of about two items in our court status, which is very good for a council of this size. I know I say that every round of committee, but it is fact that for a city of our size to only have two matters before the P and E court is quite an achievement. And again, I commend the officers concerned. And noting what you've just said, Mr Davy, about the fact that these matters will probably remain on the agenda until later in the year, in the very least, so. If there's no further discussion. Put the matter to the vote, all those in favour. Against, that's carried. There are no notices of motion. And sorry, that was unanimous as well. Are there, I don't believe there are any matters arising. We did have the outstanding matter, item one, which, thank you, I just noticed my note there. Which related to the provisional projects. So. Have you had the opportunity to read through? You happy with that? So, I believe what we were at at the time were questions in relation to item one. The recommendation I'll go back to, which was, I believe, just to approve, accept. Received and noted, is that what it was? Yep. Or any person to move that motion? Moved by the acting mayor, seconded by councillor Doyle, thank you councillor Doyle. Any discussion? There being no discussion, put the matter to the vote, all those in favour. It's carried unanimous, thank you. General business or any questions from the floor? Nothing? Then that concludes the business of the meeting. I now close the meeting at nine forty-one and move that the next meeting commence in ten minutes. Oh, there's no information, yeah. It will just start in ten minutes. Thank you.